Meeting of the Bedford County Board of Supervisors to order, and welcome all of you here this evening. If you've got a cell phone, if you wouldn't mind turning that off or putting on vibrate, that would be great. We will open up with a moment of silence. Thank you. If you'd stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And just for purposes of the crowd, Mr. Davis may be joining us. He just came in. All right. So he'll be joining us virtually this evening. Next thing on our agenda would be the approval of the agenda. I know we do have one thing to add, a closed session for personnel-related matters.
Yeah, that would be under a, in the closed session, under a 2.23711A1, personnel in regards to the information technology director position.
Are there other, any other changes or additions to the agenda this evening?
Mr. Chair, I approve, we approve the agenda as amended.
We have a motion for Mr. Johnson. There's a second. Second for Ms. Parker. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next up is our citizen comment period. I don't have anyone signed up this evening, but you would have three minutes to come speak on anything that is not a public hearing for this evening. If anybody would like to take that time, you're invited to do so. And not seeing any, we will close the citizen comment time and move towards our consent agenda. Mr. Hiss?
Okay. Mr. Chair, we have four items under the consent agenda this evening. Item A is a resolution approving the application, acceptance, and appropriation of a federal grant funding for the Southern Virginia Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. Item B is a resolution of support for Carillion Clinic Certificate of Public Need application to bring kidney transplant services to Carillion Roanoke Memorial Hospital. Item C is a resolution appropriating $400,000 for the Virginia Business Rights Sites Grant for site development in the New London Business and Technology Center. And item D is a resolution approving the application, submission, acceptance, and appropriation for the Virginia Department of Social Services Fatherhood Incentive Funds by the Bedford County Department of Social Services.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to request that we remove item C from the consent agenda and have it for further discussion later on.
Mr. Davis is asking for the movement of the consent agenda 6C item to a discussion and action item.
Yeah, actually, when you remove a consent item, you're supposed to discuss it immediately after you vote on the consent agenda. We haven't been doing that with the others.
Okay, so that would, that would be moved to action item. Okay. All right.
We would just do it right after.
Have a discussion.
As soon, yeah. Okay. So we will discuss that item as soon as we get through the consent agenda. Any other questions? Then I would entertain a motion.
I just need to be clear, we are going to do it, Mr. Davis.
Yes. It only requires one because the consent agenda requires unanimous vote.
Correct.
I was just going to second his motion. I want to make sure we had the opportunity to give it.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, I would like to move that we approve the consent agenda letters A, B, and D.
Okay. I have a motion for Ms. Bansley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Johnson. This is a roll call vote. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bansley?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes. That brings us to discuss the consideration of a resolution appropriating $400,000 for the Virginia Business Ready Sites Grant for Site Development in New London, which is Resolution R 101524-05.
Do you want me to summarize this real quick? Okay. In, in January of this year, January 22nd, the Board of Supervisors approved a resolution to apply for the Virginia Business Sites Ready Grant Program. And then if, as the other, if the grants were approved, that grant and also the Tobacco Commission, subsequent Tobacco Commission grant was approved, then you would consider actually appropriating those funds. So what, so what the actual action tonight that's in front of the Board of Supervisors, and we discussed this a little bit during the work session at a five o'clock meeting, is asking the Board of Supervisors to officially authorize an appropriation of $300,000 from the Prospect Incentive Fund, that's already earmarked in the CIP, and then a supplemental appropriation of $100,000 from the county's fund balance. So that would total $400,000 as a match to these $2.25 million worth of grant funds from the state and the Tobacco Commission.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Hiss on consideration?
I have just one question. Prospect Incentive Fund, $300,000, what is that exactly?
So that, that's been, that's been a pot of funds that the county has had in its CIP for a number of years. I mean, longer since before I took over this role. It was a pot of funds. I don't know exactly the origination of it, but it was kind of set aside that in case there was a, a prospect deal that needed to be closed and the county needed to assist in some manner, then there were a little pot of funds set aside in order to assist with that deal if need be.
But does $300 depleted then completely?
No, we haven't used any of it. So what would happen, if you re-appropriated that $300,000 here, then it would be, would be used to help fund this project, this development project at New London. That's what that money would be used for.
But my question is, you're taking $300,000 from that and then $100,000 from?
The general fund.
The general. So when you take $300,000 out, then does, is there a zero balance then?
There is.
Yes. Yeah, it's through, yeah. $300 is what the total amount is. I'm sorry, I didn't understand that question.
And if we don't do this, we don't get the other grant.
Yeah, I mean, there, there is a matching component to both of these grants. And both the Tobacco Commission and the state grant require some matching. And the Economic Development Authority is putting up $350,000. And with the county putting up $400, then we would be fully compliant with all the matching requirements.
Just to be clear, if we don't vote for this tonight, then we walk away from $2.25 million?
Yeah, well, if you don't, yes. Yeah. Whether you do it tonight or not, you may, may not, may not have to do it tonight, but there are some time constraints with these funds. But yes, if, if the matching funds aren't there, then $2.5 million is certainly at risk. Or $2.25 million is certainly at risk.
Does anybody know how much it will cost to reach pad-ready, where you have the pads in? I mean, I know the $3 million they talked about was the road and grubbing and all that. But to get the paved road in there, does this, what, what's it going to cost to relocate the disc golf? And put the pads in and have it ready for a building, for a company to come in? What, what's the total cost?
Yeah. I don't know if I have the exact figures, but my, my recollection is to get the, to get both of those sites, I think they were on the, in the work session, we talked about, Site 15 and 16. To get those completely pad-ready, you're adding another $2 to $3 million, I think, in order to do that type of work, just to get it all graded off and so forth, and get the drainage correct and sedimentation and stormwater and all that type of thing. All that goes together when you grade it. The disc golf, we don't have those budget figures put together yet. I mean, to relocate those seven, eight, or nine holes that end up needing to be relocated, there would be some, you know, some timber that needs to be harvested in order to make that work. And then, like you said, there'd be some T-boxes and holes that need to be redeveloped. But I, I don't have a figure for that, what that would be this evening. I would say that we do have that tourism lodging fund where that could help pay for those since, since this is a big tourist draw. And I think you saw from the numbers, the amount of people who come out of state to visit these courses. This is certainly that. The development of those disc golf holes is certainly an eligible expense from that occupancy lodging, occupancy tax fund that we have.
Those figures you're quoting, does that include the road?
No, but well, no, probably not to pave it. That'd be another million, like you said. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm talking about to pave it because nobody's going to move in unless the road's paved.
So we would mean that next year afterward, excuse me. Yeah. So this is, this would bring us up from level three to level four for them being, and then it would mean next year, we go back to the Virginia Business Ready Sites Program. And the other state, state, it was like this year, what was it? How many millions did they have that they were giving to localities like ours? 126 million this year. The state of Virginia gave to localities like ours to make these pad, to make these sites because they realize how much business we're losing in the Commonwealth. And so this is just a step towards it being pad-ready. But next year, we would go back to that, to the state who's doing this all over the country. We don't do this, we don't get any of those state funds in Bedford County. But, so we go back to them and we ask for another grant. But this is just a step towards it being pad-ready, towards the roads being all finished.
I think I heard you, Mr. Davis.
I, I was also going to add that, that as we continue down this road asking for more grant money to upgrade these pad-ready, to a pad-ready site eventually. I mean, to me, this seems like a gift that just keeps on giving from the expenditure standpoint. And, and the costs continue to escalate. We've got the, the cost to go to a pad-ready site, the cost to go relocate the disc golf course, there's no budget figures there. And I think it was pointed out, $2 to $3 million to make Slot 15 and 16 pad-ready. And there's no numbers on paving the roads. To me, the costs just get way out of hand. Again, as I pointed out in the work session earlier this evening, Bedford County has a robust economy. We've got a terrific unemployment rate. Just because something appears to be free, it doesn't go without strings attached. In this case, I see huge financial strings attached. And I just can't support it with so many unknowns and costs going forward. And, and to go from $2 million to $3 million on talking about Lots 15 and 16, that's only a million dollars, which I think, if I'm not mistaken, is about a penny on our tax rate in this county. And, and I, I don't see the benefit here.
Mr. Chair, I don't think anyone's talking about increasing our taxes. Mr. Chair, I don't think anyone's talking about increasing our taxes for this. We're talking about going back to the state who has, we have a governor who's very encouraged, very focused on bringing manufacturing and bringing jobs to Virginia. And so it's going back to the state. If Bedford County doesn't get it, I know their locality will. And just going back to the state and representing our county there. I'm not, I wouldn't be in favor of increasing our taxes for it.
One, one final comment I'd make as, as an employer in Bedford County, as someone who talks to many employers in Bedford County. The, the shortage of employees, I, I don't think that is an inducement for large business to move here. And, and the other thing is, is I will say this from a personal note, when I talk to people about this type of project, they always tell me, you know, we came to Bedford because we liked it the way it is. We're not, you know, we, we moved here because we like this. If, if this project were to succeed, to me, the return on this huge colossal investment would take years to pay for itself if it ever did. And, and if you can bring in enough people, employees to work in these places, I don't know how 460 could handle it now, because at this point, as I drive home in the evenings, and you'll go in the mornings, it's hazardous at best, bumper to bumper traffic for a quarter of a mile.
Any other discussion on this one? As for a motion of action, one way or the other?
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the Resolution R.
I have a motion from Ms. Bansley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Johnson. This is a roll call. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bansley?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes. That moves us on to, we have no minutes to approve tonight. That moves us on to public hearings, presentations, and to get our annual update from the Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance, Ms. Megan Lucas.
Good evening. It's good to see you all. Thanks for having me, and most importantly, thank you for your leadership. It takes courage and vision to do what you are doing, so I really appreciate your commitment. You have the PowerPoint presentation in front of you. I'm not going to take you through it page by page. I know you've thumbed through it, but I am going to talk about it. When we, when we do a program of work for economic development, whether it's in this region or other regions, parts of the country, it really is a two-pronged approach. We focus on business retention expansion, which is industries that call our region home, and we focus on business recruitment. So everything I'm going to talk about really funnels into either one of those buckets or crosses both. And we do have one key area that crosses both. Everything that we do is, is guided by the regional economic development strategy, which, which Bedford County was active in when we created. On the business recruitment and expansion side of the house, it really is the, is the program of work that says to our manufacturers, our, that create primary jobs in the region that are in Bedford County, that call this county home, that BRE program is a program that includes the regional economic developer, the local economic developer, and the state economic developer. We go to those businesses, like Georgia Pacific, Chris Hughes is with us tonight. We sit with them and we take their temperature. How's business? What's going on? What are your hurdles? What are your aspirations? And then we, as a, as a threesome, work to solve those problems. And you'll see in the PowerPoint, the presentations, the BRE visits that have occurred here in Bedford County with Bedford Business and Industry, helping them look out for, looking out for them for their needs, their issues, their aspirations, their opportunities. If you talk to Georgia Pacific, he will be happy to share with you the areas that we have assisted him, as well as other manufacturers, on areas such as communications with railroads, issues that pertain to moving goods and services via the railroad. BRE, BRE program of work is really valuable in saying to the companies that are here, we appreciate you, we appreciate the citizens that you employ, we appreciate the taxes that you pay, how can we help you continue to grow and be, be successful? When we go on and we talk about business recruitment, you see in your slide deck, I think there is, there is a table that shows about nine active projects that we have going on in the, in the region currently. Bedford County, RFPs have been, and sites have included in a majority of those active projects right now. I mentioned earlier at the work session, when Pam was talking about the, the state's lack of pad ready sites in existing buildings, went over the numbers of how that response related to what we, what the missed opportunities are in Bedford County and the region with, with capital investment of companies that would create jobs and have capital investments in our community. You see, we monitor that. I've been on board since about 2000, 2013, 2012. So we just started in those days monitoring those numbers in this PowerPoint, in this presentation. I think I only went back as far back as 2018. When we talk about recruiting companies, when we talk about retaining companies, it comes down to workforce. We hear it, we hear it in, in Bedford County. We hear it on our BRE visits. We hear it throughout the region. We hear it throughout the state. We hear it on the Eastern Seaboard. Everybody is talking about workforce. And so our program of work has been very aggressive in the past two years related to workforce, to talent development and workforce development. So a couple of key areas that we've, we've, projects that we've created that have moved forward, and Bedford County's been very active in, that I want to highlight. First of all, we stood up the Regional Educators Academy. We know when we bring, when we have high school students who are trying to decide what they're going to do, am I, are they going to go into higher education? You know, to college, or are they going to go to CTE? And we've known, we know there's a disconnect on what those opportunities are. So what we did this year is we brought together K through 12, all the superintendents of, of the, all the schools in the region, along with the CT instructors, instructors from the school districts. We brought everybody together, about 100 people into, into one place for a two-day, conference is the wrong word, but work session. They spent their mornings learning about the, the workforce resources in the region. These would be your career counselors in the high schools, the superintendents in the high schools, teachers in the high schools. So we briefed them on all the workforce resources that are available. Then we took them, divided them into groups they chose, and they visited six manufacturers in the region. Those educators went into the manufacturers and saw, it's a clean environment. It's a safe environment. It's an environment where a student doesn't need to necessarily go and get a four-year education. They can go and work at these manufacturing facilities and be making a very high wage with benefits right out of high school. And so that Education Academy, when they came back from that event, the school system sat down together in their system. So Bedford County schools sat together and created a work plan based on the information they learned from being exposed to how to get kids excited and interested in manufacturing jobs and career and technical education. So we created that. Bedford County schools were very involved in that. The past two days, we had WU. Some of you may remember in 2019, we launched WU, which is Worlds of Opportunity. That's a hands-on career fair that focuses on, in 2019, it was high schoolers today, and yesterday it was seventh and eighth graders. WU is a hands-on career fair that says to those seventh and eighth graders, experience welding, experience construction, experience heavy oper, heavy, heavy operating, heavy machinery, experience, experience medical, to get their minds thinking about what their career options are. It's in seventh grade that, throughout the region, the seventh graders have to create their plan. Am I going to go in a higher education pathway, or am I going to go into a CTE pathway? What, what we've learned is that at seventh grade, they've never been exposed. They've never been exposed to. You should have seen the seventh graders today out there operating loosely a backhoe, sitting on a, on a small-sized backhoe, but moving, moving the, the levers to move the, the bucket, to turn over a log. It was, it was enlightening for so many students. All of the Bedford County schools participated in that today, yesterday, and today. And then the third element that we do on, on talent and workforce development has been the internship partnership, where we're bringing the high schoolers in, partnering them up with manufacturers, with business and industry for potential internship opportunities. So they could learn, students can learn about the opportunities in career fields where they may not have ever considered before. So really, a lot of work is being done on the, on growing the talent pipeline, and it's starting at the seventh grade level. And quite frankly, it should start sooner, but, but right now, our focus is seventh grade and above. Educators Academy, Worlds of Opportunity, hands-on experience with, with drills, with stethoscopes, with welding, with fire extinguishers, with fire hoses, with large equipment, with small equipment, everything from computers to, it's really a fascinating thing. And then, and then the internship, the internship partnership that we're doing. Workforce crosses, crosses the business retention element as well as the recruitment element. And then, of course, we continue to work on things like pad ready sites and buildings that manufacturers are looking for to come into our region, to come into the community. And on the recruitment side, we did have a success with the Teva Pharmaceutical Building and with Solarx, who has come into that building, who's purchased that building, and is building a business there now, today as we speak. What kind of questions can I answer for you? Related or unrelated?
Comment, question, whatever, but even in your presentation here, you know, we're talking about pad ready, get more jobs and all that.
Yeah.
And then your presentation here, it says employees, 40% of business can't take on more work because they can't fill the jobs. 50% of open available jobs go unfilled, and 90% of the hiring managers say they have difficulty. And being in a business myself, it took me two years to find an installer.
Yeah.
I had an installer that was going to retire, wanted to get out of that part. And I searched for two years through advertisement, talk, contacts, everything. It took me two years. So if we get a pad ready, as Mr. Davis has already pointed out, where are all the people going to come from? If somebody comes in here and says they need 200 or 300 employees, because it seems like to me, all the schools are still pushing higher education, and very few people are going into trades.
You, you bring up a good point, and that's why projects like the Educators Academy that we went through, we brought those educators in, they don't know what they don't know, because a lot of our counselors are, are focused on driving students into higher education, because they haven't been exposed to the floor. They haven't been exposed to CTE, career and technical education. They are unaware of the wages and the opportunities that are available to students to come out of high school and go into welding, carpentry, electrical, HVAC. And so that's why the work that we're doing, seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth, that's preparing a workforce. And that, and also going on at the same time is the upskilling for people who are underemployed. What's not in here, and I know Robert saw it at a recent meeting, is the amount of our workforce who want, who wants to work but can't because they don't have access to childcare. And I think that number is around 3,000. So there's a significant number of our population who is workforce able and workforce willing, but because they lack suitable childcare, can't get into the workforce. So when you look at that, the strategy, the workforce and development strategy, the roadmap in here, you see that childcare is a critical part of that. But the answer to your question is, you won't get a pad ready site overnight. You won't get a spec building or a building overnight. And if we wait until we have that, that ready workforce, or then it, and the company, the company will not come here. And then you'll be left with, I have a workforce with no jobs. It is, it is, it is a balancing act, but we do have, if a company, if you look on the slide that says, it has the, the 10 active projects, you look at that slide, Prospect P., right, 200 jobs. Those jobs could be filled today. Oh, if you look at Solarx, they're going to be up and running in full swing by July of 2025. They're not going to have any trouble filling their 102 jobs. Now, scroll down to Project A, 1,200 jobs, that could be a push, right? But that 1,200, but Project A, which is 1,200 jobs, that's going to be a multi-phase project. So their first, Phase One is more than likely going to be a two-year phased. So initially, in the two years, it's going to be significantly less job, but at the end of six years, it's going to be 1,200 jobs.
I just know that, I know you-
You are correct.
It has to be a balancing act.
It is.
But I also know that in my business, I have all the work I can do. I'm booked up for months. I could double output. I can't find anybody that's skilled enough to come in and go to work.
And the magic word is skilled. And that's why we, that's why these programs like WU and Educators Academy hope to drive, to drive more students whose aptitudes are, are more in line with skills than a four-year education with a high, with a high debt at the end of it and, and no job. And no job.
I just see a big board there.
Yeah.
Questions for Megan?
At any time. You know I'm available to you if you want to talk more about what you see in this presentation. I do want to add, you see on the front of that a new logo. One of the things when we first, years ago, did the, the last economic development strategy was to create a regional economic development strategy. You all are accustomed to seeing the Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance logo, which is the wheel. The brand and logo you see in front of you that's included in this, the Lynchburg Region, Virginia, the edge of the Blue Ridge, that is the brand and logo and story we will use, we'll be using moving forward for regional economic development initiatives. The edge of the Blue Ridge, and then we talk about the edge of innovation, the edge of higher education, the edge of adventure, the edge of disc golf, and so on and so forth. I appreciate you all so much. I appreciate the, your commitment to Bedford County and your leadership. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, that moves us on to our next item, which is consideration of a resolution approving the replacement of vehicles for the Southern Virginia Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. That's Resolution R. 101-524-01. Captain Anders.
Good evening, Board. Appreciate the opportunity to speak for you this evening, give you a little information on the task force and the expansion work that we're trying to do. The last couple of years since the pandemic started has been kind of rough for us with the increase in criminal complaints and just a lack of resources, which has been fixed by the state and the federal government. In 2023, for the 12 months of that year, we had 236 arrests of offenders abusing children. This year so far, the first nine months of the year, we're currently at 283 arrests. And as I prepared this earlier today, found out this afternoon, we have another arrest in rescue of a child that we were able to affect within hours of receiving the, the cyber tip that was sent to us. And the offender was the mother of the three-year-old child and who was also a third-grade school teacher here in the Commonwealth.
Amazing.
So this is the work that we're able to do, excuse me, on the task force. And now that we are catching up on those, the cyber tips, where we had an average of 66 days it took us to get to a cyber tip, to review it, and get it referred out to our member agencies, we're now at an average of two days because of the ability to increase our manpower at the office. With that comes some additional operating costs and the ability to do more work and work through more evidence. And we had, for child victims, last year in 12 months, we identified and rescued 143. As of today, for the first nine months of this year, we're at 201 children that have been identified and rescued. With these cases, we seize a lot of evidence, computers, laptops, cell phones, SD cards, CDs, USB drives. In 2023, we examined 4,946 pieces of evidence totaling about 632 terabytes of data. This year, we've only examined 2,426 pieces of evidence, because the devices are getting smaller in size, but bigger in capacity. And we've currently examined 516 terabytes of data. At this rate, we will be 50 terabytes higher than last year at about 685 terabytes. We are moving to doing exams on scene, trying to reduce the amount of evidence that we have to take back to the lab for more. to take back to the lab for more in-depth analysis. As a result of this, we currently have fourteen positions working out of the main office in Bedford, Virginia, in Forest, that are staffed by law enforcement officers. Each of those positions has a vehicle. Our goal is to be in good stewards of the money that we have from the state and federal government, trying to manage the fleet that we have so that we can leverage the resale value or trade-in value of the vehicles to lower the cost of purchase of new vehicles. Also, to try to get to a point where we can properly budget to replace those vehicles on a schedule. So with fourteen vehicles, we would like to replace two a year. That would give us the opportunity to rotate our fleet out every seven years. Some of these vehicles, we are in a position to, for the trade-in value of the vehicle, sell it to the sheriff's office, which allows them to get a low-mileage vehicle that still has some life in it at a much lower cost that's already fully equipped as a police vehicle with the emergency equipment in it. So our request on this first resolution is the approval to purchase four vehicles between now and the end of next year, two as a model year twenty-four, and two in a model year twenty-five to replace four of our 2019 vehicles. And again, our goal is to try to buy two vehicles each model year and rotate those out every seven years. With that request, we will get most of our vehicles on schedule. We've got a couple vehicles with a model year twenty and I believe twenty-three that we may have to sell early in a couple of years to, to get to where we only have two vehicles for each model year. But that is our request tonight, is for permission to purchase those four vehicles over the next twelve months so that we can get our fleet on a seven-year rotation schedule. Are there any questions about that?
If you, if you're rotating them every seven years, what, what's your average mileage on them when your, when your seven years is up?
I would say depending on the investigator that it's assigned to and where they live in proximity to the office, most of our vehicles are probably going to be in the sixty to eighty thousand mile an hour, mile range. Some may be a little lower, some might be a little higher, but I would say the average is probably going to be in that sixty to eighty thousand miles.
Pretty low. Definitely got a lot of life left in them.
Yes.
I guess that's-
Did, did you say sixty to eighty thousand miles you're trying to cycle them out?
Uh, that, yes, sir. That, that's the average on some of the vehicles. Again, we have some that are a little bit higher, some that are a little bit lower, and that's based on where the investigators live and the mileage that they put on them on a daily basis. But with those lot lower miles, we also get a higher trade-in or resale value, which lowers the cost of a brand-new vehicle versus driving a vehicle into the ground and then not having any trade-in value for that to help offset the purchase of a new vehicle.
Kind of lost here because I thought you said that the vehicles you have in Forest have low mileage on them, so you can sell them to the sheriff. It looks like the sheriff would need a vehicle that, um, well, let me see. If, if the sheriff can use these vehicles, why can't you continue to use them?
Our understanding of the county insurance is that the vehicles are not covered past seven years, other than the liability for other, other vehicles that they were involved in an accident. Because of the fluctuation of our, our funding coming through grant streams, whether it's federal or state, we are trying to be responsible in minimizing the amount of vehicles that we might need to purchase in a given year.
But in the, but in the, if you sell them to the sheriff, isn't it the same policy with the insurance? If he gets the vehicle, he's got one where he's going to have liability after seven years but no collision. So if he's going to be in that situation, why can't y'all be in that situation?
Our concern generally has been that we have a much more uncertain budget from year to year as our grant funds go up and down. Say, for example, right now, I have five vehicles that were purchased in 2020. I, I mean, that happened to be one year that we had excess funding, that we were given the, the ability to purchase those vehicles at one time. I can't guarantee that I'm going to have that funding any given year to replace five vehicles. So we're trying to plan ahead and make sure that we have those vehicles purchased more consistently. We can budget for two vehicles pretty comfortably. If, we could conceivably run those past the seven years, but if they were involved in an accident and totaled, I may not have money in the budget that year to replace that vehicle.
But wouldn't the sheriff, wouldn't the sheriff be in the same situation? If he run it past seven years and wrecked it, wouldn't he be in his-
Yes, sir. A lot of our vehicles, I'd say well over half our fleet, probably more than that, are in that situation because of the, the years and miles we're putting on them. Where we're kind of blessed in this situation with, with the grant funds that come from ICAC is that they get these funds-
I can't hear.
-from the state, sorry. They get these funds from the feds and the state, which allow them to purchase these. And just like last month when we came up here and asked to purchase two used Tahos, the two used Tahos we asked to purchase are actually vehicles that belong to ICAC. Granted, the ICAC is part of the sheriff's office, but it's funded federally and through the state. So they allowed them the money. So we were just trying to take advantage, also getting more vehicles in our fleet without costing the county, having to ask y'all for brand-new cars, and we can get some used ones and still get good life out of them. Sometimes if, you know, if we had a deer wreck, is, is it cheaper to, to go replace the, the front end of it and, and a bumper or a grill than to buy a new car? Absolutely. So you're kind of, you're kind of hitting miss on that with the insurance. I mean, it's self-insured, and that, that's where they're at with it at seven years, so.
Just so I'm clear, this resolution we're passing, we're giving you the permission to get the grant, to apply for a grant, or is this coming out of our budget?
No, ma'am. We, we're not, this is not to request grant funding. We already have the funding.
You already have the funding for these, for these four cars?
Yes.
Or does it proving that you can use it?
Yes. And this, the, the, other than the, the money that would be allocated or used to purchase the two Tahos from us to the sheriff's office, that, that funding, the rest of the purchase would come a hundred percent from our grant funding through the state or the federal government.
So there's, there's no match or anything from the county?
No. And the, the, the sale price to the sheriff's office was what we were quoted as a trade-in value from a dealer. We took them to the dealers, said, what would you give us as trade-in value for these vehicles as is towards the purchase of a new vehicle? And then using that figure is what we were able to sell the vehicles to the sheriff's office with your approval.
All of that sounds reasonable, considering that you have the, the source of funds that's going to pay for these vehicles. Where I'm having some heartburn is these vehicles have sixty, seventy thousand miles on them, which implies that they still have quite a bit of value. I mean, it might be seven years old, but nowadays, seven years old still has a lot of value if the mileage is that low. Why wouldn't we, why would we have a blanket policy of no full coverage beyond seven years? It seems to me that's the thing that we need to address. I mean, I, maybe it's unwise, but it, since it only cost me a, you know, a couple hundred dollars more a year for my vehicle, I got a vehicle that's seventeen years old and I've got full coverage on it. Not seven. And it's got far more miles than that, right? Just because, you know, the vehicle's still got quite a bit of value left. And it seems to me those vehicles have quite a bit of value left at that low a mileage. So it seems to me, why would we self-insure and take that much risk with vehicles that have that much value in this environment? Is it, is it financially still wise to do that when that much value remains in those vehicles? And so, because I was, my first line of questioning, which is what Mr. Davis went after, is why on the world are we replacing vehicles with that low mileage? That doesn't make sense. But I understand we're not getting, we're not disposing of them, we're using them elsewhere. That's great. Sounds like, this seems like a reasonable plan. But what my heartburn is, and it's secondary to this issue, but I think it's a policy that I'm just learning about. Where does this policy come from, and can we change it?
Yeah, it's a-
Mr. Chairman, a question.
Yeah. Our insurance was through Vaycorp. So, um, yeah, we'll, we'll have to get with Vaycorp about what the limits would be and what the cost implications are about changing, see what our flexibility is and cost implications for changing that seven-year criteria.
And I'm, and I'm not saying every vehicle, you know, go to ten, because some, if it's, some vehicles might be ten years and two hundred thousand miles, I understand. But, but if it's, if it still has a certain inherent value, it seems to me full coverage is a wiser thing.
Yeah, I, I agree. And not, I mean, to your point, not all vehicles are created equal.
Right.
So, you know, the sedan who's running social service calls, you know, up and down the road every day, or, you know, that's not taking as big a beating as what a police vehicle is. So, yeah, there, there's different types of vehicles for different type of uses. So when you're rotating them out over seven years, though, you're saying that is it grant money that's going to replace them?
Yes. For, for our vehicles with the ICAC task force. It would be grant funding, not county funding.
Okay, so on the other side of it, we've approved X number of vehicles for the sheriff's department. Is this an addition to what we've approved, or is this swapping out a new request for two used ones that still getting the same number of cars that you've been approved for, or are you getting extra?
Well, their, their vehicles don't, don't count in what we put in for, for the sheriff's office budget. Their vehicles come out of their grant funding. But we came and, well, actually, I think it was last month, was it, Mr. Hiss? We came in, or we had taken five wrecked cars, put that money together, and then to get two more cars, since two of our K-9 Tahos have almost a hundred and eighty thousand miles on them, we got a, a value of seventeen-five on both of these, which is a steal because they're actually fully equipped. We can take our Kage out of one K-9 Tahoe and put it in this one, and that's what we came for you guys last time for. Just to do all that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hiss, we were right thirty-one thousand dollars short of getting four vehicles purchased, because taking the five wrecked cars to buy two new out of those, and then the two used Tahos, which put us in a, up to almost what we've requested in the beginning of the year. So we kind of put all the money together to try to get as much as we could out of it.
These Tahos we're talking about today are not those Tahos. Are they one and the same?
The Tahos that he wants to trade in are the ones that we asked y'all last month that we could purchase when they do.
And you said you purchased them for about seventeen thousand?
That's what we're going to be able to purchase them for.
Okay. So again, if a vehicle has seventeen thousand dollars, it needs more than liability.
Yep.
Right? I mean, they're, I'm not driving a seventeen thousand dollar vehicle without full coverage. And neither should the taxpayers. Well, it sounds like the two that, that he's buying from there is easing our burden of what the request was.
Yeah, I, I think-
It's easing our burden there. It's grant funds. I don't know why we're having-
Yeah. I, I think I understand this now far better than I understood one before we started, because I was like, I'm not sure about this. But now I understand it. I, I think I can support this. What, but I honestly think that we need to look into what can be done about this blanket policy of seven years and no more full coverage.
All right. Well, I, I got a question. So the 2019 two Tahos that we're talking about here are the ones we approved last meeting to go to the sheriff's office. And you're already getting federal money or grant money, so you've already got that to buy your two new vehicles.
That's correct. We already have the money.
So we're, that's not up to us to say yea or nay on that. You have that, and I'm, I'm glad you do.
Yeah.
But we already said at our last meeting that the sheriff could purchase it, which we approved that. It was under consent at our last meeting. I just don't, why are we talking about this again? I don't under, I don't-
It, my understanding, ma'am, is, is just part of the county procurement process. We still need to come before you for any purchases through the task force as we fall into the sheriff's office, even though we have separate funding through the state and federal grants. So, because we're looking to purchase vehicles for our task force, whether or not the, these two Tahos ended up going to the sheriff's office, we would still need to come before you for approval to buy those vehicles.
And we're talking about three different things. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we-
I'm not finished. I'd like, we're still having a discussion. I, I, I'm not finished with my question, if you don't mind. Um, so the, my point was, so we already said yes for the two, and you already got the money, and then you're asking for next year, we, that you want to do the same thing, and that's fine, too. I, because you'll get the money, and, and I'm all for that. I have no problem with that. I just don't understand why tonight we're asked to approve or go ahead and pre-approve something that's going to happen next year when this cycle occurs. I mean, I'm fine with it, but I just, and I don't understand the, the insurance thing. We, we got, we need to look at that, too. But since the sheriff's just bought the two Tahos, we certainly want to have insurance on that. But I just, I guess I just don't understand why we're, we're pre-approving for next year, and I'm, I'm fine with you getting the vehicles. I have no problem with that.
I, I think, ma'am, the, the best way to explain that is the, the contract fiscal years through the Virginia Sheriff's Association procurement process, which gets the police vehicles at the, the contract rates, begins in October and goes through September. So they're taking orders now for model year twenty-five vehicles.
Okay.
It could be many months before they actually get delivered. So if we get, this is why we're asking for two for model year twenty-four.
That's what I was trying to get to.
Yeah. And then two for twenty-five. So we don't have to come back before you again for those two. We can go ahead and put the order in, and they will probably be delivered sometime early twenty-five, mid-twenty-five.
I got you. Okay. That, that answers my question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Steve.
I got one more question.
Yes, sir.
Not to you, but to staff. We had a big discussion on county vehicles back here several weeks ago. We were going to check into how many vehicles we had, what we were, who had them, what we were doing with them and all that stuff. And hadn't heard any more about it. Has that been brushed under the rug, or are we still looking into it? I mean, we, we kind of, through some talk and everything, and I'm talking about, yeah, I'm talking about a lot of vehicles in the county was, we didn't know who had them, who needed them, who deserved them.
Yeah.
And all that stuff. And, and I think we still owe that.
It, it's just still under review. Yeah. Got one item on the agenda, and we seem to be hitting off on some side roads. I, they're all valid points, but I just, I'd like to put this one out because it's a separate issue than what's being asked.
I just thought it'd be a good point to bring it up since we talked about vehicles.
I agree that we need to talk about it. I just, resolution, pretty clear.
Put that one on the agenda for the next meeting of vehicles.
All right. But these cars are also included in our fleet management, correct?
Okay. All right. Any other discussion on that? All right. Is there a motion for action one way or the other?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve Resolution R. 101524-01.
I'll second it.
I have a motion from Mr. Johnson, seconded by Ms. Bensley. This is roll call vote. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bensley?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes. That moves us on to another resolution for ICAC, Resolution R. 101524-03, consideration of a resolution approving the purchase of a mobile digital forensic lab.
Sorry, it's another vehicle question. Excuse me. What, this is a project that we've been having on the back burner for several years, again, due to uncertainty with the, the pandemic. But with the expansion of the work being done by the task force, as I went over a little bit earlier, and the need to be able to do more forensic exams on scene on some of the smaller devices so that we're pulling less evidence back, we're not having to handle as much digital evidence, not having to worry about chain of custody. You know, we, we've had cases, we've pulled eighty to a hundred-plus pieces of evidence and keeping track of that, preserving it. And a lot of it ends up not being necessary to the case, but we don't know that on scene. The ability to, to process some of that stuff more rapidly on scene would allow us to leave more of the, the devices with the innocent family members. We're not responsible for it if something happens to it and it ends up not being part of the case. But also, it speeds up the forensic process back at the lab. So when those items that are, are previewed on scene- So, when those items that are, are previewed on scene that we identify may have evidence, we can take them back and do the full analysis, but they're not spending time going through dozens of other pieces of evidence that we don't really need. So, it saves manpower, gets the cases turned around faster. Uh, this particular mobile forensic vehicle, uh, is based on a Sprinter van chassis. It's 170-inch wheelbase, high roof, 3,500, all-wheel drive, because we do go into some rural areas all times of the year. Uh, this vehicle has actually been, uh, specked out and utilized by the Maryland ICAC. They have two of these vehicles, uh, and I also know that the Department of Homeland Security Investigations, their forensic units have ordered, uh, it was like 12 or 15 of these vehicles. Uh, this particular vendor has a contract, uh, with Omni and Safeway that's already been competitively awarded, uh, that we can get a rider on, uh, and it's already, uh, the fact that they're fairly local, being in Maryland, uh, and have built multiple vehicles, uh, to this buildout, uh, I believe is, is wise that we've got someone that's experienced. They're not building something like this for the first time. Uh, the quote we got from them was for the buildout, uh, it's about 257,000 to build out a bear truck, uh, with all the equipment and the generators and electrical and the computers and the workstations, uh, and then we were able to get a quote from a Mercedes dealer here in, uh, Virginia, under the Virginia Sheriff's Association Procurement Contract for a contract price for the vehicle. So, uh, if this resolution's approved, we replace the order with the, uh, the dealer under the Virginia Sheriff's Association Procurement Contract for the base vehicle, and that would be ordered and delivered, they told us, probably in January or February of '25, and then once we took delivery of that, we would deliver that to, uh, the buildout company in Maryland, where they would begin working on actually upfitting and equipping the vehicle, uh, as a mobile digital forensic lab. Uh, again, we have, uh, the funding, uh, from our state and federal grants, uh, to cover the, the full cost of this. There's no match requirement or funding from the county for this, and this would be utilized both by our main office here in Forest, uh, as well as be available to the entire task force of 175 member agencies.
Notice that your quote says it was only valid for 30 days, and as past that, is it still good?
They, they will give us new quotes, and I communicated with them that there was going to be some time delay, uh, in getting everything before the board for, for review, and, uh, they told me that would not be an issue. Uh, it, it's common when we are shopping around for quotes that we'll get 30 days, and, and we tell them up, upfront that it's probably going to go beyond that, we'll just need to update it if it's approved by our board.
You don't anticipate any, any increase when they refresh the quote?
I, I don't anticipate any. If they do, I'll tell them to cut some equipment out of it to get back to what they originally quoted us.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Is no discussion. Make a motion, we approve Resolution R. 101524-03.
Okay, I have a motion for Mr. Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. Parker. This is roll call. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bansley?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes.
Thank you, y'all. Have a good evening.
I'd like to thank them for what they're doing for children.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your support. It allows us to get up every day and do this.
Good, Steve.
Next up, we have Consideration of a Resolution Approving the Award of a Contract for Painting of the Bedford County Courthouse Bell Tower, Resolution R. 10152407. Mr. Kaufman?
Good evening. For your consideration tonight, uh, I've got a resolution authorizing an award of the contract to Owen Building and Remodeling. As you may recall, a couple months ago, we had canceled contract with the original contractor, resolicited, put it out for bids again. We received two bids for it. It was still within our budgeted funds, uh, with a bid total of $69,333. And, um, this would be to repaint the bell tower from the clear story up to preserve the woodwork and, uh, ensure against any deterioration.
Any questions for Doug?
Are you going to climb up and inspect it?
I, I will.
$69,000 wouldn't get me up on it.
I will use binoculars to inspect it.
Get Justin, Doug.
There you go.
He's young.
That's right. Any other questions? Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I don't have any, um, discussion really, other than just a comment. When we get something that comes in like this, we've already approved, put it out for a certain amount, and it comes in under, under the budgeted amount, it seems like we're taking too long during the process for him to have to come back here for us to say yes. I'd just like for us to work on our, on our process and tighten that up a little bit, because it seems like when we get something that comes in un, under, we ought to be able to go ahead and move forward, because we're waiting weeks when painting season's almost over.
Ms. Parker, to your point, and after some discussions with administration, uh, the next resolution actually addresses that.
Okay.
We're starting to partner them together, so.
Yep.
We're, we're moving to streamline that process.
Okay, perfect. Well, if there's no discussion, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, Resolution ours 101524-07.
Okay, I have a motion for Ms. Parker. Is there a second? Second for Mr. Scott. This is a roll call. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bansley?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes. Brings us to Consideration of a Resolution Authorizing Staff to Advertise for Bids and Award for the Register's Storage Building, Resolution R. 101524-08.
Thank you. Um, this is for, uh, the Register's Storage Building out there by the new Register's, um, building on Turning Point Road. Uh, this invitation for bid is for a 50-by-100 building, uh, broken basically into two halves, one for her storage purposes, one for early voting and for training of her staff. The intention is to, um, place it immediately beside it, utilize the site work that is currently underway out there, uh, to grade the site level, which is kind of why we were waiting on this, to put it out to bids, so that the bidders could see it. And this, uh, this, uh, resolution would authorize to advertise and solicit bids as well as award if it's within the budgeted amount.
Any questions on this one? I don't guess there's any chance we can get the state to pony up something, since we got to build something for all this early voting? This is the time of year to ask.
Yes, it is.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Make a motion, we approve Resolution R. 10152408.
All right, I got a motion for Mr. Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. Parker. Now, the roll call. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bansley?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes. And next up, Consideration of a Resolution Authorizing the Application, Acceptance, and Appropriation of Grant Funds for the Montvale School through the Virginia Brownfields Restoration and Economic Development Assistance Fund, Resolution R. 101524-09. Mr. Hiss?
All right. This, uh, grant application is to help, uh, redevelop quote-unquote Brownfield sites. In this particular case, address environmental issues, um, that are complicated by the presence of hazardous materials or contaminants like asbestos and mold, which are certainly in that building. Kind of interesting story with this of Virgi, there was a story, there was a news article in Cardinal News, and the DEQ official about the Montvale Elementary School, and DEQ officials contacted the architect, who's been partnering with the foundation group, David Hill, with, uh, Hill Studio, and, uh, they knew David from other past projects, and said, hey, you know, is this a, we read the story, we know, read that you're involved. Is, um, is this something that might fit? It sounds like this might be something that fits within one of our grant programs. So, Mr. Hill organized a conference call with myself and DEQ officials and, um, the foundation members in order to talk about this a little bit further. Uh, DEQ officials came on site and did a site visit, and they really kind of inviting us to apply for this grant. Of course, there's no assurances we'll get it, but they've been very, uh, cooperative and helpful throughout this process. Anyways, uh, the grant application is generally for, to pay for some architectural services, develop a site plan and renderings, uh, finalize a boundary and topo survey, and then, of course, a good bit of the work is to clean the facilities with, of the aspe, as, of the asbestos and other contaminants, and also hopefully get some work done on the roof repairs as well. So, um, this is a, the application is, would be for a $431,000 grant with a $445,406 in matching funds. Those, the bulk of that matching fund source would be from the county CIP, uh, that had $400,000 in it towards the, uh, towards the, the Montvale Elementary School, so.
Any questions on this? Just to clarify, it's only one $400,000 allotment in there?
That's correct.
And that serves for both applications that are out there?
It, it can. We, we, it's kind of interesting, the federal grant is ironically, which is unusual, is fairly flexible with that. So, if we spend this $400,000 with this grant, then the $400,000 that we said that we were going to use for that federal grant is basically an in-kind match that's already been performed.
Like double dipping.
Maybe.
Mr. Chair?
Where would the, uh, the county's matching funds come from?
Oh, Mr. Davis, the funds are, it, have been earmarked in the county CIP, the capital improvement budget for a, for a couple of years, so it, it's already budgeted in, in there.
And you said it's a little bit more than $400,000, though, right?
Yeah, the rest of the matching funds are coming from the, uh, uh, balance of funds that the Montvale School Preservation Foundation has in their, uh, bank accounts and a little bit of.
So, they're pledging, they're pledging to put up money that they raised.
I'm sorry, say that again?
The, the, the Preservation Foundation has pledged money that they have raised on their own, correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The $400,000, is that the $400,000 that we had?
Demolition.
Had aside for demolition?
That's correct.
And does this address anything with the roof?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, the, the budget, uh, put, the, the, the estimated budget right now puts about 350, $345,000 towards a roof. Really, I don't think that we can finish that roof repair or installation unless we also get that federal grant, because I think from the preliminary, uh, bids that have been received, that you're looking about a half million dollars to, maybe a little bit more, $500, $550,000 to put on our roof.
Right, so what I'm, what I'm trying to figure out is, when this $400 plus the $30,000 is exhausted, will all of the remediation have taken place inside and the roof be replaced? With the, with the grant funding and our match? That's what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, I, I think, Mr. Sharp, the, probably the best way to sum that up is, answer is yes, if we also receive that $770,000 grant from the federal government. We have, we have to combine it all together in order to make that work, if that helps answer the question.
And if we do not, then the $400,000 is exhausted, and we still have a leaking roof?
Well, I think we'll have to go back and revisit whether we want to, which we may want to amend the resolution, uh, now that we're talking about this. We may want to revisit whether we accept the grant, this grant. We may want to just apply for it tonight and, um, come back to accept it, number one, if we get it, and then, number two, if we receive the, that federal grant that's out there.
Uh, what I don't want to find myself is, we, we spend 400, and then we still need to spend another 500.
Yeah.
And.
Your guess is good as mine. I mean, traditionally, and this has gone through the, the entire, uh, Senate Appropriation Committee process, and we've worked through our two state senators in order to put the money in for that, but in terms of it getting into an appropriations bill and with Congress and getting that passed, I don't know. I mean, you know, traditionally, there's been, you know, lame duck Congress and lame duck president. In December, there's typically some appropriation bills passed, but I don't know about this year.
Well, if you were studying butterfly migration patterns in this county, you might get it, but.
But, uh, in this case, we have nothing to lose if, if the grant is denied. Correct?
That's correct.
Sounds like we can apply for it, don't necessarily have to accept it, but I, I'm not going to be keen on spending 400 if I still got another 500 to go.
Need to make sure we don't spend any until we know we got it.
That's right.
Mr. Chair, if there's, is there no further discussion?
Well, I would just ask that we amend this to then Consideration of a Resolution, a Resolution Authorizing the Application of Grant Funds.
Yeah. Mr. Davis, are you good with, um, just the making the application, and then, once we find out the, um, results of that grant, that we would have a separate resolution for acceptance?
I think that's a reasonable, uh, amendment, yes.
Okay.
Is there any more from Montvale present this evening?
No. Would you like to make that into a motion?
Yes, I move that we would approve Resolution R. 101524-09 with the understanding that we're going to, uh, apply for this grant.
Okay, so we have a motion for Mr. Davis. Is there a second? Second for Mr. Scott. This is roll call. Mr. Johnson?
Before, just want to make sure we understand, we're applying, this does not include the words "accept" and "appropriation."
Correct. He took it as amended. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bansley? Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes. Let's see, no board committee reports. Any board comments from anyone this evening? All right, can't, Mr. Hiss, anything from you?
Nothing to report this evening.
All right, Mr. Skelly?
And, Mr. Chair, that's, brings us to our closed sessions, plural. Um, I would call for a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1, a personnel matter regarding the IT director position. 3711A3, uh, discussion of, uh, managing real property, specifically strategic planning for the Falling Creek complex, and 2.2-3711A8, consultation with legal counsel regarding the Bedford Reversion Agreement.
Make a motion, we go into closed session.
Okay, I got a motion for Mr. Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. Bansley. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in closed session. Aye. Any opposed? We are in closed session.
See Ms. Bansley, you made a motion to come out of closed session. Is there a second? All in favor?
I.
Nope.
Who made the second?
Charlotte made the motion. Who made the second?
Bob made the second.
Okay. All right. Whereas the Bedford County Board of Supervisors has been in a closed meeting pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and where Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Bedford County Board of Supervisors that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore it be resolved that the Bedford County Board of Supervisors does hereby certify that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from opening meeting requirements by the Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion would mean in closed meeting was heard discussed or considered by the Bedford County Board of Supervisors. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bansley?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So certified.
All right. Was there anything else we needed on the agenda? I packed my agenda up. Upcoming...
No, just the next meeting is October 28th for the work session. We're going to have broadband presentations by the different Internet service providers for the work sessions. And remember, we only have one meeting in November, the 18th, and one meeting in December, the 9th. So only three meetings left for the remainder of this year.
I have a motion for Mr. Scott to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. Bansley. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.